All right, it is a little after seven. I now call the September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting of the city council to order. Tonight's invocation is given by Pastor Ryle Meyer. If you want to come to the podium and hit the orange button, please. Thank you so much for being here.
Yes, thank you for the invitation. It's always an honor to be here. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna read a verse in Mark, chapter twelve, verse seventeen. It says, "Well, then Jesus said, 'Give to Caesar what belongs to Caesar, and give to God what belongs to God.'" And so let us pray. Lord, I thank you, Father, that as we open this, this time, Lord, in prayer, that is, as we give to you what belongs to you, that you may be honored in this place. Give wisdom, Lord, that is my prayer for the city council members, Lord, for mayor, and that you would continue to pour out your wisdom and bless them, Lord. Bless the city, bless the surrounding cities, and we thank you for this time and place that you give us to worship you, Lord, in freedom, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Safman, if you could please take roll.
Ms. Elmore?
Present.
Mr. Cahill?
Present.
Ms. Kyle?
Present.
Mr. Skidmore?
Present.
Mr. Hermes?
Present.
Mr. Doan?
Present.
Mr. Meyer?
Present.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Nicely?
Present.
Mr. Nipper?
Here.
Ms. Reckers?
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Here.
Thank you so much. You've received a copy of the minutes for the August second, two thousand and twenty-two regular council meeting, along with the August sixteenth and August twenty-third special council meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Nicely, Ms. Kyle, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. You've also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, oh, Ms. Jasper Lucas?
I make a motion that we table number eleven, the municipal order for the amended PDS service level agreement, only because it hasn't been discussed at caucus. So I would like it moved to the caucus agenda so that we can discuss it then.
I'll second that.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor and a second to table legislation, piece number eleven, municipal order. I'd like to discuss this briefly. We do have Sharm Ali in the audience in order to answer some questions, kind of about the timeline and why this is being brought to you this evening, and kind of the change of the service level agreement versus the inter-local agreement that we changed a couple of weeks ago. I'd like to take. Thank you.
I don't believe I have to press anything. Okay, there we go. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all again. So we obviously are talking about the local building component of the building services. And one of the things to consider is that right now residents and businesses are going to two different entities for different purposes. And so, you know, from a service perspective, we want to make it as streamlined as possible for all of your residents and your businesses. We also, out of a professional staff, of course, we provide these services for pretty much everybody else in the county. We have five, actually six, level-three building inspectors, which is what it takes to do a local building program and a state building program. So obviously, those are all important aspects of what we, what we already provide. The inter-local agreement that you all passed a couple of months ago allows you to enter into this agreement with us. We already take care of expanded building for you, which is that hundred percent threshold on, on buildings. So we already do that for you, and now we're only talking about the, the local building component. I'm happy to answer any specific questions. We, you know, we, we, I think last year we issued over four thousand building permits, so, and we get very little issues or anything that we have to deal with. And also, we've been providing some of these services for the last month and a half to the city, and hopefully you've heard, heard good things from your residents. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't really have any questions. I just think that it's legislation that hasn't been discussed yet. I under, I'm not, I'm not opposed to moving it. I just think it should be discussed at caucus because there's pretty significant differences between what we're currently charging fee-wise to what we will, what PDS will be charging. And I think we just need to have some conversations about that because it affects, it affects our residents and the money-wise, and I think it needs to be discussed. I don't, I don't really have any questions about the service. I understand all of that. I just think it needs to be discussed at a caucus meeting because I would like to hear other people's perspective on the fee schedule that we received on Friday. And I know that Ms. Reckers had asked for some additional information after that, that we haven't received yet. So I feel like we'd be making a decision on something that, or voting on something that we haven't really received all the requested information yet.
Merfetti, if I could just, that's a great point about the fees because we are always very conscious about where those numbers land. I do want to let you know that we, we were actually just getting started in looking at those fees with our board officers, which Merfetti is a part of. We had this conversation two years ago about our fees, and for us particularly, there's really two pots of money that, that supports our services. One is tax dollars and one is the permit fee. And it's always that balancing act of who should really be paying for those services. And sometimes you cannot capture your cost of service entirely through permit fees. It's just not possible because it ends up being so high. So our board actually has a very conscious discussion. Every other year, we, we had this when Councilman Meyer was on our board. We're gonna have it now with Merfetti on the board about where those fees should land and what's the most equitable way to support these services. Just like any other public agency, we don't look to make a profit out of this. This, you know, we're in the business of service, and so that's sort of what we focus on. But I just wanted to share that philosophy so that you, you all could at least sort of take that in and, and consider that. But thank you. I appreciate that perspective.
Gary called on me. I would prefer that we keep it on the, the agenda and that we can discuss it more in the, in the proper place in the agenda. I think it is worth talking about. It is a municipal order, not an ordinance. So technically, it's not gonna have a first and second reading, which if you look at our rationale to talk about stuff in a caucus meeting, it's geared more toward ordinances. This is a municipal order. The other reason I think I would like to talk about it now is that some people may not have an issue with it, a majority of council may not have an issue with it, and we still need something to fill the gap. Because right now, we, we're not offering these services, and something needs to be done. So if we don't talk about it tonight, then the mayor's probably gonna have to talk to PDS about doing some kind of temporary service regardless.
Yep, so what Councilman Hermes is talking about is, I think you had a contract employee to fill in the, the gap until we were able to figure out the, sort of the next steps with this process. And, you know, we were very candid with the city right from the get-go that this is an employee that we've been trying to recruit back for over a year since he left us. And so finally, we were able to accomplish that and thankfully keep, keep this employee in Kent County, right? Because it is just so hard to find level-three building inspectors. We've had one physician advertised for over a year now, and we're actually an agency that that pays pretty good, has good benefits, we take care of our employees, and it's still been very difficult to fill. So, so as of now, we, you know, we, we sort of are in that limbo, I guess, or that middle ground where we have to see which way we, we need to go with the service for the city.
Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, and, you know, I'm supportive of Ms. Lucas, Jasper Lucas's motion to table, primarily because we haven't necessarily had any in-depth discussion on it. And I know that's something that I've harped on quite a bit, but what, and, you know, as I think about the fees, one of the pieces that I would definitely like to see is, you know, if we think about the permits that we've issued over the past fiscal year, ending this past June, what would that impact have been on these businesses and residences? I know in some cases, some of them look like they've doubled. So just, you know, like to take a look at, you know, what those are and, and understand if any of those may have been impacted by, by that higher fee structure. And, and I know, you know, from the cost conversations, there was, you know, some move to do that, and even at the fee rates that are there now, there's still tax dollars subsidizing, you know, those activities. So it just means we were heavily, you know, subsidizing those activities with tax dollars versus the actual fees. But I'm more concerned about, you know, potentially projects that, that didn't, that wouldn't have gone forward, or if, if the fees would have jumped substantially.
Councilman Meyer, if I could just respond to one thing, we have always been transparent and open about our fee structure. In fact, this time, thanks to the Building Industry Association, we actually sent out our new fees for the year to, to the BIA, and they blasted it out to their membership. And, you know, I've not received a single phone call about our fees or, or anything like that. Now, fees are one thing, and I think you all understand this, is sometimes people are willing to bear that cost if they get a very high-quality service in return. And so I would, you know, I would say that our, our service is at a very high level. In some cases, permits have been returned the, the same day, or maybe the next day they've been processed. And so just from my perspective, the, the concern about the cost for the fees is, is not something that I have heard. But again, I completely appreciate your perspective and understand where you're coming from.
Okay, any other discussion before we move forward? Ms. Kyle?
I just have a question, and this would be probably to you. Would it, would it hurt our citizens very much if we waited a few weeks, or is that a problem?
So the individual that we contracted with began his work at PDS today. Now, I know from our, our relationship and our working relationship that we have with PDS and Sharm Ali and the team there, we can make it work and figure it out, but we would have to have some type of temporary solution if we are going to wait on this type of legislation. And they've also accepted, so we have, technically, we have three individuals in the building department. We had Mark Stewart. Gary Forsyth took over for Mark Stewart. We have Sean Sims, and then we had, have Steve Canfield. Steve Canfield is reporting directly to Peter Glenn, and his job responsibilities are changing. Sean Sims is actually going to come on board with them as well and work with them to get him trained up and get him, you know, hopefully to his level-one certification. So PDS has, has graciously taken on some training aspects for Sean. So not only having Gary have the position, but also Sean Sims having a position as well.
So I guess what's gonna happen is, since they're having trouble finding an inspector, I'm sure we would. So, because, because, you know, we're a much smaller entity than they are, and I don't want to inconvenience any citizens or businesses while we wait, is, that was my concern, and I understand the prices, but we're gonna have to go that way anyway, it looks like to me.
Yeah. I mean, and ultimately, right now, there, you said two places, but if you talk about HVAC, also, that's three different places, because you're going to H, the state for HVAC, you're going to PDS for expanded jurisdiction, and then you're going to the city for local residential and local light commercial. So it's, right now, it's three different agencies. And something else that we've talked about is, once they have our local building, they can then go to the state, which they've already communicated with and gotten the process for taking over our HVAC. So then we would be able to take that three and put it into one, which I think would make things extremely more streamlined and easier for our residents and our business owners. And, you know, Gary is right, there was a tremendous amount of subsidizing of, with tax dollars. The permit fees that we were taking in weren't even coming close to covering the expenses of that department. So when you look at the fees that we were charging, they probably weren't exactly what we should have been charging. And, you know, when, when Sharm talks about how that has gone out to all of these different companies with the BIA, it's, it's kind of telling that they haven't heard any kind of feedback in a negative way.
So their process would be a lot smoother and a lot faster.
Correct.
That would be advantageous to them. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Um, I, I'm not insinuating that the fees are too high. I agree that we were probably undercharging. My issue is that we keep getting legislation, or not true legislation, according to Mr. Hermes, on the agenda, and it hasn't been discussed at caucus. And I feel like we're basically put in a hard place where we have to go with whatever we're given. And I don't like, I feel like we owe it to our residents and our businesses to have conversations about these things. The purpose of caucus is to discuss these things. And Sharm Ali said, she's been very transparent with us, that they were recruiting the person that we were contracting with. So somebody knew that this was coming down the pike. Why was this put on the agenda with no time to discuss? And I'm, I'm just, I feel like that's happened more and more over the past few months, and it's concerning to me because we're elected to represent the residents, and we're not being given an opportunity to discuss things that affect them. And I don't disagree with anything that's been said. I think these fees are probably totally valid to be charging, but we're not being given the opportunity to discuss those things in a caucus meeting, and that's the purpose of the caucus meeting. And we could have had this conversation earlier in the summer because we knew this was coming. So, you know, I asked multiple days before for the permit fees side by side, and then finally, on Friday afternoon, we received them. You know, could I have looked them up myself earlier? Yes, but I didn't know this was on the agenda for tonight until I received the agenda on Friday. So I just, we have a caucus for a reason. We owe it to our residents to have conversations about things that affect them, and we're not doing that.
While I agree with you to a certain extent, I also understand that there are things that come up that, that have to be taken care of. And this situation occurred after caucus. Okay? And you asked for the information. We gave you the information multiple days prior to the meeting. I received no additional questions from you. I would be more than happy to have answered any questions. And this is part of the bigger conversation that we, that took place for several months while we were trying to work through the original building and zoning issue that we're all aware of. This is still working through that process and trying to figure out all the holes and all the gaps that were left and rectifying them. And while I understand there's a process, sometimes things have to just happen. But I get it. Any further discussion? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to table legislation number eleven. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Nipper?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Doan?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Reckers? Ms. Elmore?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion fails. Okay, are there any other changes to the agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain that we adopt as presented. Ms. Elmore? Mr. Hermes? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carried. All right, our special presentations this evening, we have our business spotlight and a special proclamation from Kevin Shea with Putt-Putt Golf. If you want to come up to the front. The microphone is already on.
We want to thank the city to, for the recognition for Putt-putt Golf of Earlanger. Back on July thirty-first, we decided, Putt-putt Golf decided to go for the Guinness Book of World Records. We were trying to accomplish the most holes played by a foursome in a twenty-four-hour period. So the way that came about, we have a lot of regulars up there. I'd like to introduce Bob Schottenger and Tony Sanders. These are two of the guys that played in the Guinness. And there's two guys that are missing, Cole Hetzel and Chris Hetzel. Those two guys that aren't here tonight, they, they already have two world records for the longest pickleball game played and the longest foursquare game. So last October, I sarcastically said something to them because I caught wind of it, and I said, "Would you guys want to look into the longest putt-putt golf played?" And they said, "Oh, man, that's a lot of work. I don't know if I want to do that." I said, "Just look into it, get back to me." So they got back to me in late October and said that a team out of Germany has the record, and it was fourteen-hundred-and-forty holes was played in a twenty-four-hour period, and that was, that happened back in two thousand and five. So we talked about it, and we applied in last November, and we got approved. So we've been playing at it since last November, and we started, like I said, July thirty-first at eight AM, and we finished August first at AM, played twenty-four hours straight. And the guys got twenty-four hundred and... or no, I'm sorry, two thousand and ninety-seven holes they played in a twenty-four-hour period. And I wrote down some, some fun facts that I thought I would share with. The players played, once again, two thousand and ninety-seven holes, that's a hundred and sixteen-point-five rounds. Each player walked sixteen-point-six miles. Now, that doesn't include going back to the car and changing clothes, because I think you change, what, five times, six times? And one guy was wearing a Fitbit watch, and he had over twenty miles on his Fitbit watch in a twenty-four-hour period. There were three thousand one-hundred-and-ninety-seven hole-in-ones. That averages out to twenty-seven point hole, twenty-seven-point-four hole-in-ones around. And then, last but not least, we partnered with Matthew Twenty-Five Ministries on the day, and we raised roughly, uh, twenty-five-hundred dollars for Matthew Twenty-Five Ministries, and that went towards the flooding in eastern Kentucky and the tornado victims in our area. And that was mainly Bob's suggestion was Matthew Twenty-Five Ministries, when we throwed, when we threw it around on who we wanted to raise some money. So we're very proud of that, and it was a, not only was it for these guys, but it was a community event. My wife, Lacy Shea back here, she helped quite a bit, and we didn't know what kind of crowd it was gonna be, but I rented a golf cart anyway. And if you've been up to our putt-putt, there's not a whole lot of parking. It was built in nineteen sixty-seven. And I warned the, the police, and I sent an email to the mayor and just said, "Hey, we're gonna be here twenty-four hours." I, we got traffic hopefully under control, but we ended up having to block it off, and then we were shuttling people up the hill. It got so crowded. We broke the record at ten forty-three that night, and it was, it was great. There were a lot of people from the community there, and we had food trucks and cookie trucks and ice cream trucks. We had, we had the whole nine yards, but we appreciate the city for inviting us tonight, and if you ever get a chance, stop up and see Putt-putt Golf of Earlanger. One, one last thing. Ms. Kyle, I graduated from Saint Henry in nineteen eighty-nine, and Ms. Kyle was by far the best teacher I ever had. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, to all, to whom these presents shall come. Whereas on August 17th, 2022, Guinness Book of World Records recognized Erlanger Putt Putt Fund Center as a record holder for the most miniature holes of golf played in a 24 hours by a foursome. Tony Centers, Chris Hetzel, Cole Hetzel, and Bob Schotzen-
Schottenger.
Schottenger are weekly tournament players at Erlanger Putt Putt Fund Center. And after discussions with owner Kevin Shea, they began their challenge on July 31st, 2022. With the support of many volunteers, friends, and family, they broke the previous record of 1,440 holes in 2005 with 2,097 holes on August 1st, 2022. The event was coordinated with Matthew 25 Ministries and raised $2,500 to donate, to be donated to the flood victims in Eastern Kentucky. The City of Erlanger would like to congratulate and celebrate all those involved with making this event possible. Now therefore, I Jessica Fettie, Mayor of the City of Erlanger, Kitten County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim September 7th, 2022 to be Erlanger Putt Putt Fund Center Day in Erlanger and do commend this observance to all our citizens given under my hand and the seal of the City of Erlanger on this day, September 6th, 2022. Congratulations. All right, the next special presentation is Matt and Jennifer Westwood with the Chelsea Ryan Foundation. We don't have the lovely Ms. Westwood tonight.
Sorry. Can you hear me? Everybody hear me all right? Yes, I'm so sorry about that. She is teaching a grief share class, so that kind of, so you get me, sorry. But we're here, so we're going to do it. So, my name is Matt Westwood. I'm with the Chelsea Ryan Festival of Hope. Many of you here have heard about that and know about it. So, who you may not know is Chelsea. So, I'll tell you a little bit about her. Wonderful child. She's our oldest of four. Loved by many, possessed many great qualities, but she just didn't see that. And unfortunately, on March 14th, 2009, she took her life. So, after that, and as we picked up the pieces with that and kind of rallied the troops, so to speak, we knew we had to do something and we had to do something to give back. We had to tell her story and we needed to tell our story. Because before then, I mean, mental health, we didn't know it was a problem because we didn't have that problem. And we quickly learned that Chelsea's experiencing mental health issues. We didn't know where to turn. We didn't know what to do. And quite honestly, we thought, "We're bad parents." Well, Jennifer thought I was the bad parent and then she took that. But we weren't. And she was experiencing issues and things that she didn't understand, things that we didn't understand, and we sought help. And that was embarrassing. It was hard to come forward because when I grew up, it wasn't really talked about. Suicide certainly wasn't talked about. And we didn't even think about that until it started to be a realization that this could possibly happen. And so, there was many hospitalizations, many things that happened. It was a tough road. Now, if I ask you that night happens 10 more times, she doesn't take her life. It's just things got too big for her. She didn't know where to turn or what to do. So, we started the Chelsea Ryan Festival of Hope to remember her. We wanted to remember her for us, for the family, to let other people understand how great she was, but to also break down some stigma surrounding mental health. There's, we're better as a society, we're better at this, but there's still a lot, a lot, a lot of work to do. And we wanted the people to know the tools of suicide prevention, how to talk to people if you think that's happening, what you should do if you feel like that's happening. You get to that crisis point, "What do I do?" Thank goodness, we've got a 988 number. If you don't know that, write it down. You call that number and it empties, it doesn't, you're not going to pick up somebody in Rhode Island. You're going to get somebody here in the community that's going to listen to what you need, directly, direct you to the resource that you need when this all works right and it's still getting some feet under it. And they're going to connect you to those people as quickly as possible, depending on what it is that you need. So, that's great. It's great to see those things happen, just like 911 when that came about years ago. 988 is a great number. So, Festival of Hope, so what we do? We do it right over here at Lloyd High School. It's this year, October 23rd, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. So, we bring everybody together. We have a good time. We do things at the festival that Chelsea would have enjoyed. At least I think she, I know she would have. She definitely would have. We have fun and we made sure when we started this that everything was going to be free. So, it's not like, "Oh, great, a festival. Going to mortgage the house to take the kids to this festival." No, it's free. It's open to the public. So, I hope to see you all there. I'm memorizing your faces right now. So, it's real quick. It's 2:00 to 5:00. We have resources there from the community that can help with questions. So, it is a little chaotic. There's a lot of noise and fun, but there is information that you can get there that day that will help if you have questions for yourself or people in your life that might need that. We do raise money. Now, I'm not asking for money tonight. I'll wait outside and ask for that. I'm kidding. God takes care of that. We're not worried about that. And that money goes straight to the students at Lloyd High School. They get grants and they get certain things and they've allocated money to help these students. But some of the things that face them are big and stuff that I can't even think of. So, we want to make sure that we can fill some gaps and help them out. Insurance only goes so far for therapy, you know. Sometimes it's transportation needs. It's, there's a lot of different things. For the great people over there that handle these students, they do a fantastic job. And I'll tell you what, coming out of this pandemic, I hate to talk about it, but it, it's a real thing. My son like had to relearn how to do high school again, you know? So, this is all big stuff for them. And we deal with stuff. There's really not an age group that's under 10 that's not affected by suicide and mental health. So, I encourage you to come that day. It would be great. Pray for us and just keep an eye on those in your life for sure. So, I put in front of you three things. One is a card. It has Jennifer's name and phone number and my own. If you want to contact us to talk more, there's a little flyer there. So, if you forget anything that I just said, which is fine, you'll be reminded of that. Hope to see you. You don't have to be there the whole time. You can show up for a little bit. And then last is a little postcard that says, just a note to say hello. So, we do this from time to time. And we encourage people to send that to somebody in your life that you might know that needs an encouraging word. Maybe you need to send it to yourself. Maybe there's somebody to the right or left you or in this room that you would like to send that to. I do have a few extras if somebody would like some in the audience. And we have the summer send-off too, doing some fun stuff, just being silly, sharing some hope with the city and the people that show up for that. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it very much to give me this, this time to speak to you about the Festival of Hope. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Kyle's on his way up with the sign-in sheet. Thank you so much. Okay. First on the list is Dr. Tawny Hutchinson. You'll just need to hit the little orange circle. If you could state your name for us, thank you.
Dr. Hutchinson. I have a practice on the corner of Dixie and Kennebune. I'm a chiropractor. Bad subject, but we have a homeless problem in this city. It's increasingly getting worse. I hear it's going to get worse when they close Mary Dale down or bulldoze it over. In the last few weeks, I've dealt with homeless defecating in my back parking lot. They're literally urinating in the front of the office on the bus stop facing my office, 30 feet away from my window. He was arrested for that. I just wanted to be, you guys to be aware that this is happening. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. We are definitely aware. Our police social worker is very, very in tune with what's going on. Our police, our Public Works, our Fire and EMS, they have been out to that property to clean it. We understand that there is an issue. Okay, we're working on solutions.
It's very frustrating.
I, I can't imagine.
I've got compassion for them, but not when they're doing that in my office.
I completely understand.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
There was one positive thing that I don't know who was in charge of it, but on the same block that Mr. Hutchinson's talking about. They did take the park bench and they made it so that it's divided into four little spots so they can't sleep on the bench.
During the day, they're, and I agree, I did, that's right in front of my office, but they're up until, I've been running them off. They're, they're sitting there all day. And they're, they're sitting there drinking beer and throwing a beer, and there's a trash can right there. They just throw the beers behind them. I've cleaned the woods out. I've paid money to have the woods taken out behind the office. I've cleaned everything other than the human stool and toilet paper up.
Well, they've made Dollar General a bad spot too. They, they leave all their garbage there in front of that bus stop thing, so it is a big issue. If you don't live in it and you don't look at it every day, you don't think it makes any difference. But it makes a big difference if you have to look at it and you have to figure out, look in the bushes to see feet hanging out underneath the, you know, on the grass. They're sleeping in there.
It's definitely recognized and it is one of our top priorities. And I, I can't imagine what you have seen and I apologize.
I literally caught him. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is Joe Connet. If you can state your name.
My name is Joe Connet. And good evening, everyone. I am here on behalf of myself and my neighbors to ask that the nuisance ordinance be enhanced to give the officers of Erlanger the ability to effectively enforce noise complaints throughout Erlanger, providing them the tools necessary for objective enforcement, eliminating subjectivity and emotion in decision-making. Members of the Erlanger P.D. recommended we get in touch, touch with council and in front of council to make you aware of the seriousness of noise problems and express our support to give officers the tools necessary to handle and remedy situations where noise loudness is a problem. Noise is defined under the nuisances, nuisance activities in the section of the definitions of the ordinance, but there is nothing in the prohibitions section directly addressing noise. As written, enforcement of these noise clauses is subjective. Surrounding cities have ordinances to address overreaching sound and noise volumes. And for a couple of the cities, it reads, "Emission of noise or sounds which is noxious enough to destroy the enjoyment of dwellings or other uses of property in the vicinity, in the vicinity by interfering with the ordinance, ordinary comforts of human existence." Pretty emotional words. The noise definition in the proposed ordinance, nuisanceactivities.1.u is well-worded and as the former, but in either case, enforcement is subjective, not objective. We are here tonight because we are not afforded a remedy on August 13th of this year when the noise and fireworks began at approximately 9:45 a.m. and continued through approximately 11:00 p.m. This wasn't a first. When called, members of the Erlanger P.D. said there is nothing they could do, nothing to enforce. The levels that day were noxious enough that eliminated our ability to enjoy property outdoors, let alone indoors. And many of us left the neighborhood for periods of time to get away from the unending noise and fireworks. Some in the neighborhood have young children who go to bed early, weekend or not. What is too early? What is too late? What about others that have health issues or other concerns? This can be a very subjective relative to your point of view, which is why we'd like to see a comprehensive and objective definition and enforcement within the ordinance. Provision should include limits for both daytime and nighttime levels and times. Erlanger police officers are trained in the use of firearms, tasers, and radar guns. They are more than competent to use a sound leveling measuring device to provide them with absolute measurement by which they can remedy any noise complaint. That day, we also experienced not only ongoing noise from fireworks, but falling debris that was left behind in our yards. Here's a sample. It's not small. This stuff falling from the sky was a hazardous situation, not to mention the debris left in our yards. I don't think that was the intention behind legalizing fireworks, but that was something else officers could do nothing about. So, we ask, please consider and give the police department the tools and support needed to keep residential areas of Erlanger peaceful and enjoyable. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Hermes?
Mayor, can we add that to the caucus agenda?
Yeah, let's do that. We have the first reading on tonight, the nuisance. So, if we make some type of change, we'll just have to have a second first reading. Okay, all right. Ms. Hoffman, if you can add that to the caucus meeting, please? Okay. Next on the agenda is Kent Wessels.
Hi, my name's Kent Wessels. I am one of the partners in the brewery that kind of kickstarted the request for the text amendment allowing bar drinking places, which was obviously something that we would need to have a taproom associated with the brewery that we were looking to open. So, I, I understood there were some questions and concerns. I really just wanted to make myself available if anybody had any questions for me in particular. So, that's mostly what I'm here for.
I appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions for Kent? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you being here. All right, that, that concludes public comment. I'm going to go ahead and skip over the mayor's report because we have a tremendous amount of legislation. City administrator's report? Nothing to add. City attorney's report?
Just one thing, mayor. We'll talk about the legislation now soon when we get to that section. But I just wanted to remind everyone on council, we had a city-initiated foreclosure for 406 Center Street and that property now is going to be for sale at the Master Commissioner's Sale in Kenton County on September 20th at 10:00 a.m. I've been given no indication by staff or anyone else that the city wants to bid on that property. I think that we want to let that go on to whoever the bidder is. I just wanted to alert everybody that that was going on. And if there is any change where the city wants to bid on that property, we probably would want to discuss that tonight or at the, tonight, I think it would be tonight. Because I don't think we have a caucus meeting before the 10:30 on, on the 20th. We don't have an appraisal yet on that property. It should come in in the next few days. But I traditionally here in Kenton County, properties like that are going to, you know, there, there's, there's a heavy investor-based interest in those types of properties. So, I'm reasonably confident we will recover our liens and whatever out-of-pockets we might have. out-of-pockets we might have, but just historically, the reason we foreclosed on that property is because it was a vacant and abandoned property for many, many years. I don't think anyone was looking to make money on the property. I think it was just a, frankly, probably needs to be torn down. Okay. I, I say that, and someone will come in and bring Joanne and Chip Gaines, and they'll turn it into a phenomenal host.
I was just trying to make sure that it was the property that I was thinking of, and the last thing that you said helped confirm that it was the property I was thinking of. Okay, thank you.
That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Glenn, do you have anything to report on capital projects?
Capital projects, street striping for this budget year was bid in July and completed in August, so that's completed for the year. And our concrete ongoing street, sidewalk improvement project that we've done annually, this will be our fifth year, that was bid in July as well, and Humphrey Concrete was awarded that, and they'll be starting this fall. They've been a little busy, so we're looking for them to start in October on that. We'll be finishing Zone Two this year and moving to Zone Three of four zones. So as we move out towards the newer section of town, things should go a little quicker, so hopefully in the next few years, we'll be finished with our sidewalk improvement project. Street projects, concrete streets, Sigma, Kappa, and Theta have been bid in July as well. Jefferson Contracting was awarded that, and we had a public workshop last, on the 31st of last week, I'm not sure if that was Thursday or Friday, but, or Wednesday or Thursday, but, so we had a public workshop where we invited all the residents to come in and look over the plans and give us input and hear their concerns. Also, on the asphalt streets, which would be Kimberly, Mitten, Debbie, and Jaclyn, we've also bid that in July, and we'll be starting that this month as well, and we had a, the public workshop for that on September 1st. Parks, park projects, we've started the process of Erlanger Road Master Plan with Human Nature, so that master planning project has started. Cahill Commons, we're meeting with Vioxx's team this week to start the construction drawing, design of Phase One and Two this fall and winter, we'll bid it this winter and go to construction on Phase One improvements next spring. The restroom at Silver Lake is nearly complete. The trellis came in, which is the last element to finish that restroom up, and it was, it has some issues, so it's being reconstructed, so hopefully that'll be done before summer send-off, that's the plan, and some, we did some additional concrete plaza, and we'll be doing some landscaping here in the next couple of weeks. And then just one little thing to add is, we're planting a tree for the class of 1967 at Lloyd High School, so they're gonna be dedicating that tree, hopefully, the 17th of this month. And lastly, the Public Works Facility, we've been meeting with Jim Vioxx and the PCA team, and hopefully, we'll be getting that out to bid in late October and opening bids in maybe mid-November. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, are there any other reports from department heads? Ms. Hoffman?
This month, we are recognizing retired employee Dale Wilson. Dale retired as an operations manager with the Public Works Department in 2021 after 20 years of dedicated service. Please check out the Friendship Garden wall on the city's website to learn more about the contributions that Dale had during his time with Erlanger. And also, we have started our mom fundraiser. It, the moms this year are $8 per eight-inch pot. We just need your order forms by September 19th. You can give us a call here at the city building or stop by. The fundraiser is to support our adopted troop who is over in Europe at this time, and we will be collecting items to mail to them for Christmas. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, any other department heads? All right. Are there any reports from task forces this evening? Ms. Skidmore?
It's not a task force, but it's Kenton County Alliance. The meeting began at 11:30 at the Public Library in Kenton County. The attendance was 20. This was the first meeting of the 2022 school year. We discussed the KIP program, which is Kentucky Intervention Prevention. We seem to be addressing the same issues, but we are devoted to the cause. We have a new group of kids after 2020. There is a text crisis hotline, 741. This number is a national number. Social media, meet the student where they are positive. Topics we discussed was depression, it's 42 percent, anti-school is 41.6 percent, and anxiety is 3 percent. The busiest time to call the crisis line is 6:00 a.m. through noon, transition time from home to school and school to home. The next Kenton County Alliance meeting is October 4th, 2022, from 11:30 to 1:00 at the Deets Auditorium. It's usually at the library, but this one is gonna be at the Deets Auditorium, October the 4th, 11:30 to 1:00. Upcoming programs, September the 9th will have a beach theme, September the 16th, crowns and homecoming, September 30th, Neon Night, October 7th, Senior Night. Chelsea Ryan Festival of Hope is October 23rd from 2:00 to 5:00 at Lloyd High School. Contact person is Kelly Westwood, if you need to request a table, and the email address is, it's all lowercase, t-a-b-a-o-six at gmail dot com. End of report.
Thank you. Any other task forces? Okay. Ms. Hoffman, are there any bids tonight?
No, ma'am.
All right. Does anybody have any unfinished business? All right, new business?
Mayor, I'd like to ask that we go into executive session in conformance with KRS 61.810, subsection 1F, to discuss the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an employee.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Ms. Jasper Lucas, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. We'll go ahead, and we are gonna go into executive session. We are all going to leave and go into the conference room. You all can sit tight. We'll be back.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we come out of executive session.
All right. Mr. Cahill, second the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. We're back in session. All right, so, we're moving on to legislation. Mr. Gatlin.
Yes. Do we have a motion as it relates to what we was discussed in legislation?
Ms. Jasper Lucas? All right, and do I have a second?
What is the motion?
The motion is to accept the mayor's recommendation.
For the position of C A O.
For the position of C A O, sorry. I didn't know how detailed I needed to be.
Should've planned this better. And Ms. Elmore, I saw your hand for a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right.
All right, next we have, forgive me, I hope these are still in the order they're in. We have a second reading, which is an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, establishing a personnel pay and classification plan for all Erlanger employees and non-elected city officers, and repealing section thirty-five point oh oh three and thirty-five point oh oh four of the Erlanger Code of Ordinances, which is ordinance number twenty-four fifty-four. As we have discussed, we are taking out of the thirty-five oh oh four, the basically job descriptions for everybody other than the non-elected officials. Those will remain in statute and in ordinance. And if you look on the Google Docs sheet that is attached, those positions B through R have had changes to their minimum and maximum. Position band A, city administrator, remains the same. This is the second reading.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read? Ms. Kyle, Ms. Elmore, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Doan?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Nipper?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Elmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carried.
All right, next we have an ordinance to the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, transferring five million dollars from unreserved funds to the capital fund and clarifying the use of those capital funds. If you look at section number two, capital funds are defined by those eleven items, and those eleven items and only those eleven items could be taken out of the capital fund. This also is a second reading.
Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read? Mr. Meyer, Ms. Jasper Lucas, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Nicely? Ms. Nicely?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Elmore?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Nipper?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Doan?
No, ma'am.
Motion carried.
All right, next we have another second reading. An ordinance amending the Erlanger zoning ordinance, including one, allowing greater flexibility within the mixed-use district by removing the requirement for multiple uses on one parcel, or building and updating the definition of mixed use; two, amending the use-specific standards for restaurants with or without drive-ins or drive-throughs; three, adding a setback for driveways; four, removing the location requirements for dumpsters, trash, and recycling storage areas within residential districts; five, allowing privacy fences inside and rear yards of residential and commercial districts and removing a redundant regulation for fences on vacant lots; six, amending the maximum size of detached signs in the community commercial district and changing the name and description of section eleven point oh nine to better reflect its intent; and seven, removing the appeals process and referencing the process set forth in KRS-100. Attached to this ordinance is the recommendation by both P D S staff, and this was approved at the August fourth Kenton County Planning and Commission meeting. And the words or the language that has been changed within the zoning code is also attached to this ordinance.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read? Ms. Nicely, Mr. Hermes, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Doan?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Nipper?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Elmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carried.
All right, next we have an ordinance amending the Erlanger zoning ordinance, amending the use-specific standards for brewery, distillery, winery, by one, permitting a bar or a drinking place in breweries, distilleries, and wineries, provided they are less than fifty percent of the total square footage; and two, making such use as subject to the use-specific standards for bar or drinking places. You can see the items that have been added under four oh five use-specific standards, under C six A, and well as B. This also was heard in front of the Kenton County Planning Commission, at which point they recommended approval at their August fourth meeting. The staff report, I'm sorry, the report from KCPC with the language being changed is also attached, but it is in section four oh five there in the ordinance. This is a second reading as well.
Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read? Ms. Kyle, Ms. Elmore, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Elmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Nipper?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Doan?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
No, ma'am.
Motion carried.
All right, next we have an ordinance to the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, providing for the annual assessment of all real estate and personal property within the city of Erlanger, which is subject to taxation thereby for the fiscal year beginning on July one, two thousand and twenty-two, and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and providing for the payment and collection of such taxes and the penalties and interest thereof, and describing the purpose for which the tax is so collected shall be appropriated and used in creating a special fund called the Park Improvement Fund to support the ongoing development of new and existing parks. Under section two, you can see that the ad valorem tax on real estate shall be at the rate of point three oh one dollars for each one hundred dollars, and that the ad valorem tax on personal property shall be at the rate of point two nine six dollars for each one hundred dollars. Also within the ordinance, it discusses the payment methods, and again, continues to fund the park plan that was started last year at a allocation of twelve percent of the real estate tax revenue, which will go into the Park Improvement Fund. This also is a second reading.
Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read? Ms. Kyle, Mr. Hermes, any discussion? Mr. Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I know, I said some, you know, had some comments about this tax rate before, but, and I've long been a proponent of reducing taxes, but I don't think that this one is necessarily appropriate at this time. I think we could have kept the tax rates flat, which I believe would have been comp plus two, and just give us a little bit more room. And specifically, when, in the absence of knowing exactly what's going to be cut from expenses over the coming years, our revenues are not as increasing as at the same rate that our expenses are. So there will be some, you know, significant changes, you know, coming in the future, whether that's in some dramatically increased taxes, or some dramatically decreased spending, which typically comes at the, at the front of our staff. So I would have liked to seen this stay at a flat rate versus another reduction, but that's all I have.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
I'm gonna echo some of what Mr. Meyer said. I'm gonna vote yes on this. I support reducing taxes, but I do have some concerns at this time about doing it. I just feel like we need to really look closely at our spending and moving forward. So I just wanna put that out there.
Any other discussion? Okay, Ms. Hoffman, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Elmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Doan?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Nipper?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carried.
All right, next we have a first reading of an amended nuisance ordinance, but I think there may be a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend this ordinance to strike, it's gonna be on the third page, under nuisance activities, one, U. It's in regards to noise violations. I thought that this language was very subjective, and given the comments of the gentleman that came up and spoke today, it kinda reinforced that. I think that we should strike this so that the further legislation can move forward, and then we can address this at the caucus meeting. So my motion would be to strike one U on the third page, noise violations.
No, I think he just needs a second on that motion, if anyone else wants to strike U from this ordinance.
I just have a question. So I just wanna make sure I'm clarifying what we're doing. We're striking noise from everything. We're striking it as a violation, so we can basically go back and be more specific.
Yeah, we can, yes. I mean, the way it's worded now, we don't have that anywhere in our ordinances, and what's there is very subjective, and frankly, could, could be anything and anybody, so.
So from a practical perspective, if this amendment passes, we will do a first reading of this ordinance without section one U.
Okay, you have a second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second in order to eliminate U from this ordinance. Have any discussion?
So just to clarify, will we have to have another first reading? When we modify that?
No, I'm fine with doing the first reading tonight.
Okay.
Yeah. But if we modify that, we wouldn't necessarily, we're not saying that we're gonna put it in the nuisance, we may do it as a, as a separate noise ordinance altogether that has some criminal teeth to it? Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll go ahead and strike U, and then it's on the caucus agenda.
Okay, now we gotta do a first reading of it. So this is an ordinance to the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the Erlanger Code of Ordinances, section one oh four, an ordinance to modify and add to the terms of the ordinance of section twenty-five oh nine, so you can see what is being underlined is what is being added. The only addition that we've made to this ordinance, a nuisance ordinance, is to identify chronic nuisance property, to give the teeth, so to speak, to law enforcement to have another tool in order to deal with these chronic nuisance properties. So we have defined chronic nuisance property, and we also have defined the various nuisance activities that would fall under chronic nuisance property. We have taken out one U, so that is not a part of this. And if you look at the, it goes through the rest of the underlying sections, discuss the methodology used if we actually had chronic nuisance property. Again, this is a first reading.
Okay, Ms. Hoffman, if you can note in the minutes the reading.
All right, next we have an ordinance to the city of Erlanger, Kentucky, providing for a credit of its occupational license fee for new employees as part of an economic development project by Gap Inc. under the Kentucky Business Investment Program, which is KRS-154 point three two, subsection ten, and through KRS-154 three two, subsection one hundred. And this would be providing for a, supporting a one percent credit of the city of Erlanger occupational license fees, which will be added to the three percent that the state provides, providing a total KBI benefit of four percent. This also is a first reading.
Okay, Mrs. Hoffman, please note in the minutes the first reading of this ordinance.
All right, next we have an ordinance to the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending ordinance twenty-three eighty-eight in section one-one-one point three five of the Erlanger Code of Ordinances related to Sunday retail alcohol sales. The only change that is being proposed here is under A and B, that we are taking out the except Sunday and the hours of eleven AM and before two-thirty AM, so that there will be the same times for retail sales of alcohol, Sunday through Saturday, which will be the six AM to two-thirty AM.
Okay, Ms. Hoffman, if you can note in the minutes the first reading of this ordinance.
All right, next we have an ordinance amending the Erlanger zoning ordinance, including one, removing multifamily residential as a permitted use within the business park zone; two, removing use-specific standards for multifamily residential constructed within the business park zones; and three, adopting use-specific standards for temporary uses. This was based on testimony provided at the public hearing on September first, two thousand and twenty-two, where the Kenton County Planning Commission recommended it, and the changes in the proposed the Kenton County Planning Commission recommended it, and the changes and the proposed changes are attached as a part of the report we received from Chairman Darple from KCPC. This also is a first reading.
Please note in the minutes the first reading of this ordinance.
All right, finally, we have a municipal order of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the service level agreement with planning and development services of Kenton County to provide all building codes administration services, including local and state jurisdiction. You can see attached is the agreement and the amendments to the current one-stop-shop service level cost sharing, as was discussed earlier by P D S and the mayor. So basically, what's happening here is now the city is going to contract with P D S for all building codes administration services, including local building and H V A C, the costs of which will be borne by permit fees and the P D S general fund for the remainder.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Mr. Doan, Ms. Nicely, any discussion? Mr. Meyer?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I know, I mentioned, there's some additional information that I would really like to get about this to understand what the, the financial impact on our businesses and residents would have been over the past fiscal year. I, you know, generally, I do tend to support, you know, the concept here, but I would like to, I would truly like to have that information before actually being able to have him to cast a vote. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jennifer. Jennifer and Gary.
Doesn't matter unless, unless a roll call vote is called, that one matters.
All right. Are there any announcements this evening? All right. Do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Mr. Nipper, Ms. Nicely, any discussion? All in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.